Good evening. Thank you for joining us. We're going to call the Castle Hills Regular City Council meeting in order and determine if a quorum is present. Quorum is present. We are going to make a slight change and we have a special guest with us tonight for our vacation. We have Mr. Ram Lopez with St. George Episcopal.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Let us pray. Gracious God, we give you thanks for all the blessings that you have given us in our lives. We thank you for the recent rains. We thank you for the chance of more rain. We thank you for the city of Castle Hills, for our neighbors, our friends, families. We pray that you would be with us this night as we do our work together, that we might better this community and bring you honor and glory in all that we do as we care for one another. In all this, we pray in your name. Amen.
Thank you. And next up, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Harada, will you lead us? Thank you, Mr. Harada. We have one person signed up to speak. That's Mr. Jared Moore. Say your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Very great. Thank you. My name is Jared Moore. My wife and I are the owners of the Science Guys of San Antonio. I just wanted to come in and take a few minutes of your time this afternoon. We're going to be holding camps at Coder Presbyterian Church this summer. We are trying to find ways to market to the neighborhood, and I came in and spoke with one of the staff members here at the City Hall, and she mentioned that it might be a good idea for me to come today. So I have asked if maybe we could put out some signs in the inner, in and around the neighborhood. But I just wanted to see what options there were, and also to take a moment to just share with you guys who we are and what we do. So we are the Science Guys of San Antonio. We came from Nashville, Tennessee back in August. The Science Guys have actually been up and running for about 25 years and have started to franchise out in the last seven years. So we are the new addition to the Science Guys family, and we offer STEM programs for elementary age students, all the effort to promote STEM, to get kids excited about science and technology, engineering, and math, which is a big push that we're having in the country right now. And so we are, like I said, we're holding camps July 15th through the 19th, and then July 5th or August 5th through the 9th. So I just wanted to take an opportunity to introduce ourselves to you guys, since we'll be working here in your city. And so, and see if you had any options or any suggestions on ways that we could market outside of social media, because we are doing all the social media things, but I know word of mouth and notability, and you know, putting a face with a name goes a long way. That being said, we were featured on the, what was it, San Antonio Living with Shelley Miles, they did a feature on us a couple of months ago, so we have been able to get in front of some TV screens, but you know, here we are nonetheless. So if you have any suggestions, we are happy and eager to hear them. So.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Moore. At this point of citizens to be heard, we're not allowed to speak back because it's not on the agenda to discuss. But we welcome you to Castle Hills, and if you want to schedule time with the city manager, he would be the best person to talk to about, you know, marketing potential.
Okay, great. Yeah.
Welcome to Castle Hills.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Yes, sir. Okay, Council, we have the consent agenda. Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the City Council adopt the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Haley. All in favor? Okay, unanimous. Thank you. First time in new business, public hearing on an application for a special use permit from Susan Always on behalf of St. George Episcopal Church for a special use permit to install a modular building for school facilities at 6900-6904 West Avenue, Castle Hills, Texas 78213. More particularly described as Lot 20, Block 9, County Block 5778, St. George Episcopal Church subdivision. According to the plat thereof, recorded in volume 9547, page 119, deed and plat records of Bear County, Texas. It is 6:36, and we're going to open the public hearing. If there is nobody signed up to speak on the public hearing, we will close the public hearing at 6:36 and proceed to item 6.2, a discussion and possible action on a recommendation from the zoning commission and on ordinance number 2024-06-11 regarding an application from Susan Always on behalf of St. George Episcopal Church for a special use permit to install a modular building for school facilities located at 6900-6904 West Avenue, Castles, Texas 78213, more particularly described as Lot 20, Block 9, County Block 5778, St. George Episcopal Church subdivision. According to the plat thereof, recorded in volume 9547, volume 119, deed and plat records of Bear County, Texas. Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor Council. The zoning commission met last Tuesday, and they approved the SUP, or recommended approval of the SUP, SUP 322 vote with a cap on the student body, I believe at 572 was the total. So that was their recommendation to you all as council.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Mr. May.
Mr. Rappley, I just have one question. What is the size of this structure?
I'll let the applicant discuss that. I think it's Ms. Haley.
Hi. The size of the structure is 4,662 square feet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Joyce.
Do we know why zoning wanted to cap enrollment?
I do not know. I know there was a discussion of traffic impact and then size of the potential building and the total student body, but that was just part of the recommendation. I know it was discussed with Mr. Schnall as well, with the zoning commission, and that was one of the commissioners' recommendation. I think right now the current student body enrollment is like 535. Is it 538 now? So they basically seem to be an arbitrary number of 572. My understanding is that this will be, this building will be an expansion to allow for additional areas of the school for their departments. But I don't know why there wasn't, you know, I had to refer to Mr. Schnall to see if there was a logic based from that standpoint.
You know, I'm going to give you my recollection from this meeting, and I would ask that representatives of the St. George also speak to this and tell the council where they are on this suggestion from the zoning commission, this recommendation from the zoning commission. During the presentation, questions were asked of Representatives of St. George about their plans and whether they plan to increase enrollment. Again, I deferred to them to correct me, but as I recall, the head of school said that they have a internal policy to limit their class sizes to 60, except for their youngest grade. And they go, I think, from pre-K to 8. They did mention their current enrollment was, I think, 538. There was a mention of 535. There's a mention of 542, but in that range. The school, and several times, the representative of the school said they had no plan to increase enrollment. Nonetheless, comments from the zoning commission members who voted in favor of the motion with the recommendation to cap enrollment seemed to doubt that the school would not expand. And I think that was what drove them to pass the motion made by one of the commissioners to recommend approval of the SUP with the cap on enrollment. The question I was asked directly was whether that was permissible, and because it relates to the use of the facility and zoning is about use, my answer was yes, they could make that recommendation, understanding that these city council would have the final say and could accept the recommendation as given, or I believe there's a proposed ordinance in your packet that has a, several recitals, and then ordains that the count by the council, that the special use permit be issued to St. George with the phrase at the end, conditioned on enrollment at the school not exceeding 572 students for the next five years. The council could make a motion to adopt this ordinance with that language or without that language. And for that matter, the council could make, you know, other modifications to the proposed ordinance that it deems to be appropriate.
And Mr. Schnall, I do remember that the two commissioners that voted against it didn't like the idea of the cap.
That, that is my recollection as well. In fact, one of the commissioners repeated that to me on Wednesday morning after the meeting, that he was very uncomfortable with the cap. And it's not my place to keep my opinion, but it is my place to answer questions, which is what I did for the zoning commission, and am available if there are questions for me from the governing body. And again, I would ask that the Representatives of St. George be given an opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Schnall. Council, Mr. Joyce.
Yes, I would appreciate the Representative of St. George is making a comment or two, please, with respect to the plan for enrollment and the impact of this facility on staff size. Will it impact your staff size, and will it impact parking?
Thank you, sir. My name is Thor Kwanda. I'm head of school at St. George. So to clarify a couple of things, so we're currently at, we were 545 last year, we're 538 this year, coming into the next school year. Our total possible enrollment, if you look at 60 students at a grade, multiplied by the number of grades, and then add in 36 for our youngest grade, junior kindergarten, actually works out to 576. And so that's, I think, where the 572 might have come from, is that mathematical equation which would govern our maximum size. The building would allow us some elbow room on campus. Currently, we have a couple of teachers who are sharing classroom space, particularly art and music and things like that. And so adding this facility allows us to give each teacher their own classroom and thereby deliver a more effective program. It also allows us to expand our STEM program and our robotics program, which, as you heard earlier, is a growing area of interest in this country. And so the new facility allows us some more space to do that. We have no plans to add a fourth section onto our grades and thereby increase enrollment in that manner, but we would like to be able to, you know, live in our current configuration, three sections at a grade, 60 students at a grade level. Our youngest grade, we cap at 36, and then coming into kindergarten, first grade, it's 60 at a grade level.
So I have a question. Are you opposed to the cap?
So in fairness, I would respectfully ask if other similar educational institutions are also capped in enrollment. We have every intention of being good neighbors. We're not adding to the traffic flow via additional sections. We're not adding via additional faculty member to our, to our footprint. And so I would just respectfully ask, are we being subject to something different than what other comparable educational institutions might be held to?
Sure. And I think that's exceedingly fair. I think personally, the only difference that I would draw is St. George's relation to the community and kind of being on a residential area. I've seen during the times, and I think y'all do a great job of having Sergeant Hart out there and making sure that things run smoothly. But I can see where that could be a point of contention with the neighbors, especially as cars queue up. But I don't know if other schools are held to that, and Mr. Schnall or Mr. Rappley might be better positioned to answer that question.
Mr. Rappley's walking in, so I'll answer first. Not to my knowledge. I don't recall when the Castle, Castle Hills Christian Church, which is on the old First Baptist property, I don't remember there being a cap on their enrollment. That's the, I think, the only educational facility that's been before the council in recent years. The mayor has asked whether other, the gentleman said that he wants to be treated, that he thinks St. George should be treated like other comparable educational institutions in the city as to the cap, and the mayor asked, do other religious schools in the community have a cap on enrollment? My answer was no, and your answer is?
I can't recall any that have had a cap.
Mr. May.
And Mr. Schnall, before you go back, just, I need to know, this is property as proposed for the module placement that is already zoned, tax exempt, and owned by the church, correct?
Yes, it's two, two lots. They, the, the address on the application was 6900-6904 West Avenue. So it's part of the whole footprint for St. George. But there were two, I'm not sure the houses are there now. There were two houses, I think, at 113 and 115 East Castle Lane, which either are or have been removed, and the modular would be put in that area. And there would be no change in impervious cover, and I think the, the head of school commented on the use.
And there's no other evidence that there are similar types of restrictions on any other private school in Castle Hills. Is that correct?
None that I can recall, and Mr. Rappley echoed that.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Mr. Schnall or Mr. Rappley, either one of you can answer this question, I believe. The, the idea for the cap was, did this come from a citizen comment, or did this come from the, the board of the commission itself?
This came from a member of the commission, motion made, was seconded by the chair. There was discussion. And as Mr. Rappley said, the vote was three in favor, two against, and Mr. Solis, as the chair, was one of the people who voted against. But it did not come from a citizen. One citizen did speak during the public hearing or during the whole discussion. And my recollection is that he lives quite close to the campus of the school, and he commented how impressed he was with how smooth the, the school had made the traffic flow. And he, he had no comment about enrollment. His comment was primarily that he was, you know, very pleased with how the school had managed the traffic.
I believe he lived across the street.
Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt, City Council adopt ordinance number 2024-06-11, granting the application for a special use permit to install a module building for school facilities at 6900-6904 West Avenue, Castles, Texas 78213. More particularly, Lot 20, Block 9, County Block 5778, St. George's Episcopal Church subdivision. According to the plat, recorded in volume 9547, page 119.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second? Last one more time. Do we have a second? Okay, motion dies for lack of second. Council, do we have another motion? Mr. Joyce.
Well, I'd just like to make a comment. I don't really see the value of the cap, but the head of school has already told us that the theoretical cap is at 472. So what purpose does it serve to put a cap on it? The cap is already there, at least in theory, according to the way they prefer to operate their school, which they've done for a long time. So my motion would be similar to Mr. May's, except that I would, I would remove the cap.
Well, hold on. I, I don't think Mr. May's motion included the cap.
Correct.
Oh. I beg your pardon, but I made that nice speech.
We might be on the same page.
Mr. Schnall.
Okay, so any, anyone except Mr. May can now make a motion that was pretty much similar to what Mr. May said, but Mr. May cannot under Robert's rules, because he was a proponent of the motion that died for lack of a second. So someone else on the council can make a motion.
Mr. Joyce.
Okay, I move that we accept the recommendation of the zoning commission for ordinance number 2024-06-11, et cetera, et cetera, but excluding the cap.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Mr.
I accept that.
Mr. May, we have a second. Any discussion? Ms. Danes.
Hi, can you hear me?
We cannot hear you, Mr. Rappley. You might want to turn that up.
Can you, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I just wanted to make one quick comment about, it was, it's not about a private school. It is about Castle Hills Elementary School. They are capped, and I don't know the exact number, but they are capped at a certain enrollment. I think it's about 540 people. And my understanding, students, I should say, my understanding was because the city of Castle Hills didn't want portable buildings popping up all over that northeast property. It didn't have anything to do, in my understanding, with traffic. On that note, I'm not opposed to, to putting a portable on the St. George property, but I did want to just mention that because it had come around and people had said that they weren't aware of anything, but as, at my time serving as a volunteer and PTA president there, it was talked about that there was a cap at the Castle Hills Elementary property.
Thank you, Ms. Danes. Council, I don't know if anybody has a, any change of heart, but we have a motion on the table. We have a second. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Council. And thank you all so much for being here. And next up, we have discussion and possible action, or resolution number 2024-06-11, designation and appointing a health authority for the city of Castle Hills, authorizing the mayor to sign a certificate of appointment, Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Just as we've done in the past, this is essentially a renewal. I know we did this, I think, prior to COVID or during at that point. But this is the resolution to designate and appoint a health authority for the city of Castle Hills, which is through the San Antonio Health District, Metropolitan Health District, which is the, if I say this wrong, sorry, Chi Chi Junda Wu M.D. as the appointed health authority for the city of Castle Hills.
Dr. Junda Wu, perfect. Council is largely ceremonial, and I guess following up on what we've had in place before. Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution number 2024-06-11.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second? Back in by Ms. Haley. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Council. Next up, we have discussion and possible action, authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Intermountain Slurry Seal to perform street maintenance work as part of the city of Castle Hills street maintenance program, and to authorize the city manager to execute said contract. Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Just as we've done in the previous, which is now five years, we've, we've done over 500,000 in street maintenance, over 30 streets as part of the street maintenance program. This year, we, as far as our engineers selecting, they had updated the payment PCI, the pavement condition index, and then selected Trillium Southmanton, section of Southmanton, Halbert, and Northcrest for this year, being fiscal year '24. We did budget dollars in this current budget for this street maintenance project. Again, this is Intermountain. We essentially piggyback with Bear County for the reduced cost for the street maintenance. And this is their fifth year. They've done about 30 or so streets and have always done a pretty good job from our standpoint, being Mr. Harada, myself, our engineers, for the maintenance projects they do here in Castle Hills.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Council? Comments, questions? Mr. Joyce.
I think, I know the answer to this question. We already have this money, right, Mr. Rappley? It's already in that fund.
Yes, this is budgeted right now.
Okay. In that case, I, I move that we authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Intermountain Slurry Seal to perform street maintenance work as part of the city of Castle Hill's street maintenance program, and to authorize the city manager to execute the contract.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Second by Ms. Haley. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Haley, we'll let you have this one. Any discussion? All in favor?
Usually they come about into August, September, so we're working on the timeframe when they would be here again.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Okay, and next up, we have discussion, possible action, on possible actions on appointments to the zoning commission. Mr. Rappley.
Mayor, Council, these are the appointments by Council, Councilman Joyce, Councilwoman Danes, and Councilman Smith as a result of the recent non-election. It's their place right now to choose candidates for each of those commission. I don't know if you want to do six through five or individually, six through five through 6.8, or just do each individual item? Mr. Schnall, each individual item is fine? Okay. And they're allowed, you all as council, as we've put this together in the past, that y'all can choose the candidates, and then the mayor has the ability to choose the chairman of that committee if necessary.
Perfect. Mr. Smith.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council reappoint Kristin Bengachea to the zoning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Joyce.
I would like to reappoint Mr. Juan Solis to the zoning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Ms. Danes.
I would like to reappoint Charles Jackson to the zoning commission.
Thank you, Ms. Danes. And I will reappoint Mr. Juan Solis's chair. Next up, we have discussion, possible action on appointments to the Architecture Review Committee. Mr. Smith.
I don't have nothing at this time.
Okay. Mr. Joyce.
I would like to reappoint Mr. Barry Middleman.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce, and Ms. Danes.
I would like to reappoint David Kilgore to the Architecture Review Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Danes, and I will come back with my, the next council meeting with Mr. Smith.
We do have an A R C at the end of this month, so those current members will stay, and then, of course, the chairman as well, until chosen.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley.
How about the alternate? Don't we choose an alternate?
I think the mayor chooses the alternate, Mr. Schnall, or the, the new.
Because in some of them, we choose one and you choose one.
Yeah, it's a little bit.
I think it's council as a whole chooses an alternate, and then the mayor chooses an alternate, but we can bring these back on the June 26 meeting that we have.
I believe that's correct, that the, the council as a whole picks one alternate, and the mayor picks one alternate, and the mayor selects the chair. I'd have to look at each one of the ordinances, though, to be 100% sure.
Thank you, Mr. Schnall.
And by the 26th, we'll have Ms. Heinrich look at who are the alternates and when they are up, if that is the time for those alternates for selection.
And if anybody has anybody that's interested, please reach out to me. Let me know. I'm happy to put somebody in there that wants to be there. And next up, we have discussion and possible action, and appointments to the Board of Adjustments. Mr. Smith.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we reappoint Cassidy Oliveras to the Board of Adjustment.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Joyce.
I'd like to reappoint Mr. Bruce Smiley Caleb.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Ms. Danes.
I would like to appoint Zach Zurich to the Board of Adjustments.
Thank you, Ms. Danes, and I'll reappoint Mr. Bruce Smiley as the chair. And next up, we have discussion, possible action, and appointments to the Parks and Projects Commission. Mr. Smith.
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Joyce.
I would like to reappoint Mr. Victor Sylvia to the Parks and Projects Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Ms. Danes.
I would like to reappoint Bernard Yedemeyer to the Parks and Projects Commission.
Perfect, Ms. Danes. Thank you. And then I'll follow up with the next meeting with the chair, with Mr. Smith. And next, we're going to break into the budget work session number two for FY 2025 city budget. Mr. Rappley.
So I guess, I beg your pardon. We're not doing economic development?
It wasn't on the agenda.
It's not.
We need to add that on for the 26th.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Thank you, Mr. Joyce. What's that? Mr. Rapley, is there a, uh, something to share on here?
Yeah, it's, uh. See, I brought this case. I can't see.
Oh, yours, Mr. Rapley. So we'd love to see your new glasses.
No. They're only based on a recommendation, if I can't see. They were, um, recommended, so. What's that? It it's only if, um, I need to look. Yeah. Other than that, it's twenty twenty, so. Yes. All right. All right. Looks like it's working here, man, unless you hit the button.
I hit it.
Okay.
I'm here for you, Mr. Rapley.
So, uh, this will be our second budget workshop. This will cover the departments and I will just go through some highlights of the proposed budget so far. Um, I am going to provide you with what we have as proposed total budget for the department, uh, proposed total for salary and benefits fits together for that department, and then, uh, requests by the departments. And then after that, um, any of our directors here, uh, can answer any questions related to their individual budgets. So right now, as we changed to two to one last year, if you recall, uh, the two to one change in rate was sixteen point seven eight. Uh, the renewal is this year is seventeen point one six. And then, um, currently, um, healthcare did increase, but as we've done in previous years, this is just a potential placeholder, because, uh, Ms. Davis will be working with our healthcare provider on the rerate, um, closer to when, um, w- we get a little further down the process. Right now, it's at a fifteen percent increase. Um, if you call like two years ago, we had in twelve thirteen percent, ended up being only like one or two percent. So right now, it's just more conservative and placeholder from that standpoint. Doesn't include a cost of living adjustment. We don't have any additional requests right now with any of the departments. And then included in the proposed budget is the final payment with principal and interest on the platform truck that was purchased, uh, seven years ago, I believe. So that will pay off the truck as of October of this year. Next slide, uh, this is just the administration in court. Administration's total is a million fifty four, six twenty three. And then of that, uh, salary and benefits is six hundred fifty four thousand, one twenty three. Municipal Court, um, three oh two, seven fifty nine is a total proposed. And then salary benefits at one twenty eight, um, one hundred and twenty six thousand, uh, and nine. And that does include, uh, we we've had to get new prosecutors. Um, it does include a little bit of an increase in that for salaries for prosecutor and judge as well. Total positions, eleven administrative administration in court, and then, of course, a line item we adjusted for the additional costs. Next slide, Mayor. Fire Department, um, currently proposed at two million, two hundred thirty two thousand, three oh eight. Salary and benefits at one point nine seventy four, two oh eight. Total positions on the proposed budget, twenty. And includes an adjustment for entry level fire positions. The original was fifty one thousand, uh, two ninety, and now it's at fifty four, two thirty eight. So that was adjustment was made. Um, Chief has been looking for a couple firefighters. And, um, he did some research and salaries comparing to entry levels to other departments in and around the area. So we adjusted that and placed that into the proposed budget already at fifty four, two thirty eight. The requests that he has listed, if you recall, um, last year, we replaced the three bay doors, the front of the building. And so this year, we need to replace the three in the back. We need to take some steps to remodel the bathroom. If you know, if you recall, we've spent, um, multiple phases to renovate the fire station with ARPA dollars o- over the last couple of years. And now the bathroom, uh, really needs some work over there, um, for both male and female firefighters. They'll replace the bay heater, uh, that needs to be done. Um, the last one, the other bay was replaced in two thousand twenty three. The other one's twenty three year old, uh, heater that does not, um, operate. It gets cold there, apparently. Um, apparatus, N T D computers. Um, this will help to integrate with the CAD system, shrink in the dispatch communications and continue to improve, um, as we work from two I S O rating to eventually one, one day. And then, of course, we've talked about the fire rescue truck being replaced, um, last year. Um, and this would be the opportunity to replace the rescue here, um, anywhere from seven hundred and eighty thousand to one point one million, uh, from the from that standpoint. Um, that's something that we'll probably have a further discussions on with the chief because, um, even if we move forward with it, if I recall, um, it wouldn't be ready for about two years, nor did you pay for it for about two years in the first place. Correct, chief? And then also, what's not included in here is dollar amount that I wrote it down, chief, was looking at, um, the fire department as far as, you know, uh, recruitment and being competitive with other departments with certain positions throughout the fire department. So we have a dollar amount associated with that that's not included in here that would be an additional request, um, as far as personnel salaries. Next slide, Mayor. Police Department. Um, we have a total three million, two sixty two, three seventy six. And the salary and benefits are three million, forty nine thousand, four twenty six. Uh, I have here total personnel, twenty eight, um, but that's also a missing four or five, chief, that would bring us to total dispatchers and police officers. And there's no, uh, request from the police department right now. Uh, next slide, Mayor. Public Works. We have, uh, right now, proposed for the streets, four hundred fifty seven thousand, seven fifty two. Salary and benefits, two forty eight, two fifty two. And then in Public Works on the sanitation side, six eleven, two thirty two. And then salary benefits, three eighty, two thirty two. Um, total position nine in Public Works. And then, um, we need to look at, uh, replacing the two thousand thirteen, um, sanitation truck and then replacing the Public Works F one fifty truck. So. Any other requests, Mr. Harada? Going once, going twice? Okay, next slide, Mayor. Uh, two thousand twenty five proposed budget here under capital expenses. This is the future transfer. So we have fire for future radios down, five thousand. Future vehicle, fire, twenty five thousand. Um, rescue truck, ten thousand, pumper truck, eleven, two fifty. And then fifty thousand for future vehicles for, um, essentially replacing the sanitation trucks from that standpoint. And then, uh, future S C B A, fifteen thousand as well. Next slide, Mayor. I'm sorry? Uh, breathing apparatus, what's what's this?
Self-contained.
Self-contained breathing apparatus, sorry. Sorry. Just missing a U for scuba, so. Um, next slide. And then, obviously, here, here's sort of the timeline. We have our budget workshop today. We will have our, um, June twenty six Wednesday meeting. Um, I had it as a placeholder, but we are going to have a few items on there where we need to discuss, um, I have Mr. Andrew Freeman coming to discuss potential, um, projects that we may need to borrow on in the future to discuss our debt capacity and what we'd be looking at moving forward. Um, I know that, um, y'all had wanted to bring him in to review the possibility. If there's additional dollars we need to borrow for renovations to this building, so he will have an agenda item separate to discuss those. Now, he's going to come in with his preliminary because we won't have the certified values just yet, which we'll have at the end of July. Um, we will also have, I'm going to have Chief Ladwig do, um, a presentation based on the review that we had of the fire department. If you recall, we had an outside, um, consultant come in and review the fire department, top to bottom, review personnel, uh, fleet. Um, so he has that ready to provide to y'all fro- from that standpoint. And then, um, obviously, we might have some other agenda items and then kind of get into some other projects with the special funds related to ARPA and seed, and then, um, hopefully coming back with a recommendation from the Parks and Projects on a commons project. Um, so we'll have a pretty, pretty full agenda for a special meeting on the twenty six. And then on the July ninth, I will submit the proposed budget. Uh, Tuesday, August sixth, special council meeting number four, for the four budget workshop. Um, and then, um, regular council meeting, uh, August thirteenth to discuss the tax rate. Uh, schedule a public hearing on that tax rate. And then on September fourth, we'll have the budget public hearing. And then September tenth, we will, uh, adopt budget and tax rate on that night. Last slide, Mayor. I think that's just questions. So at this time, if you have any questions for me or our individual departments, um, we're all available.
Mr. May?
Uh, Mr. Rapley, uh, in the next series of workshops or discussions, are we going to have the last year budget and what the proposal represents in terms of increase percentage decrease?
I'm. Um, you know, because we're in the nine-month budget right now. That's been a little hard to compare because if you recall, last year, we took the numbers from twenty two and twenty three. But this year, being in the nine-month, it's it's a little hard to compare. We can go back and look at the twenty three to see some differences, but there might be a jump because in different departments, based on increased pay, steps, those kind of things, um, may look a little larger than the twenty three versus potentially twenty five, but right now, we can't compare because it is that nine-month budget right now.
I I do get that, but we do have to compare something.
Sure.
And we could extrapolate. I mean, that is a possibility. My concern is, before we pass the final budget, I just want to be sure that, you know, we can message appropriately to the citizens. You know, this represents, uh, a certain percentage increase, and here are the reasons. I'd also like to see a comparable of, say, twenty twenty three, uh, revenues and what how that compares to the anticipated revenues based on what we've seen so far. And obviously, that would help me determine whether we're passing an outsized budget, we're being conservative. Uh, maybe we're not even spending enough in certain categories. That would be helpful.
Well, I think, you know, Ms. Davis and Ms. Wallace can sort of, like you had said, sort of extrapolate out to a a twelve-month budget in our current form of what we pro- project as the nine-month to see if we can get some kind of indication and also compare twenty three as well. So.
Good point, Mr. May. Thank you. Counsel? Any further questions? Ms. Haley?
So regarding the fire department. R one oh nine is in need of immediate replacement, but it's going to take two years to get it. Is that, I mean, that kind of? Have we ordered it? I mean, what it, how can that be? If it needs to be replaced immediately, what are we talking about for a two-year?
Well, I'll let the chief elaborate, but as far as we've, we kind of discussed this last year.
I know, and I, that was, that was a year ago, and I've.
You know, I I.
Since then, and.
At this point, you know, having the platform paid off October this year freezes up for potentially another type of finance for a fire truck. But, um, I'll give, I'll let chief give you the timetable for potentially acquiring a new vehicle like that.
Thank you.
Mayor, counsel, um, as far as the truck goes, um, obviously, the current rescue one oh nines in dire need of replacement. There's some issues with it that have been pointed out. Um, the deal with actually waiting two years currently, if you put in an order for a new truck, it's averaging anywhere between twenty eight to forty two months on delivery. Um, it used to be a year, two years ago, we were looking at anywhere between twelve months to eighteen months. Um, it's just has gotten that bad as far as, uh, the delivery times.
Is that because there's so many that need to be built and too few people to build them? I mean, why is that?
There's, there's been an increase in in demand. Um, there's a lot of departments that, um, used to be volunteer departments that have turned into E S Ds. And they're, of course, purchasing a large number of, uh, apparatus. And also, we're still feeling the effects of COVID and the lack of product and supplies. Um, so they're still trying to get caught up on that.
So when's the last time we had a repair job we needed to do on the? I mean, we've had a, has it cratered and we have to borrow somebody else's unit if we needed it? I mean, what, this is?
Yeah, and luckily, we haven't gotten to that point yet. Um, you know, we've, we've had some major, um, mechanical issues that we've done some repairs on over the last couple of years to keep it in service. Um, obviously, it 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 serves a need that that we have for right now, which, um, you know, purchasing the additional pumper would would meet those needs and exceed, um, and have extra benefits as well.
So you haven't gotten your wrench out to start doing repairs on the?
I've had a couple of times that I've, yeah.
I was kidding.
A little bit of, well, I, yeah, unfortunately, yes, there have been times that I've been out there working on it.
Thank you. I, I know we talked about this last year, and it was two years last year, and I guess the immediate part, it's kind of like if it's, maybe it's just.
Um, in the review that we'll discuss, um, next meeting, um, it'll touch on on his interpretation and what his his feelings are on on the current rescue.
Thank you, chief.
Sure.
Counsel, any further questions?
So I think Councilwoman, that's something as part of, uh, the chief's presentation on the twenty six to give you details of what the consultant has recommended. You can make decisions from that as part of, um, or as we move forward through this proposed to adoption budget.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Okay, counsel, we are going to proceed to announce the mayor and city council members and items of community interest. Mr. Smith?
Um, I just want to take this opportunity to thank all the volunteers that we have on our various boards and commissions. They may, they they do a lot for our community, and I appreciate their service.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Haley?
I'll agree with that, and I'll add that this is the time in the summer when our volunteer organizations, our garden club, our women's club. The community organization has a different time where they do their membership, but the women's club and the garden club, summer is when they get ready to start their next year's activities, and I encourage people, if they haven't participated before, that it's a good time to get involved.
Mr. May?
Uh, just a reminder, the next Historical Society meeting is right here in these chambers, uh, this Saturday at eleven A M.
Mr. Joyce?
Just want to let you all know that our our branding project is proceeding very, very nicely. We had a presentation the other day from Creative Civilization, and, uh, they're doing a tremendous job. They're to a point now where they're beginning to test some phrases that might describe Castle Hills. And it's very exciting. Councilwoman Haley and I were able to attend the meeting, and it was, it was really very, very cool, very positive. And, uh, I think y'all are going to like it. We've invited Creative Civilization to make a presentation next month. And, uh, to begin to introduce to council and the community some of the ideas that they're coming up with. It's still very, very preliminary. It's all draft stuff. I mean, nothing's cut in stone. But, uh, it's, it's, I just find it very exciting.
Mr. Joyce, would you explain a little bit about the three sessions that this was citizen-driven, all that they're, what, how they're getting to what they're doing now?
Well, sure. You all may recall that we, uh, we had some public meetings, oh, a few weeks ago, that Creative Civilization hosted. And there were three meetings, as Councilwoman Haley said, and we had very good attendance, twelve to fifteen folks at each one. Uh, lots of good feedback. Uh, Mr. Agi Alar, who is a, uh, the chairman of Creative Civilization, is very good at running meetings. And they were actually looking for what are some of the core ideas that define Castle Hills? And how would you describe Castle Hills? So it's, it's these kind of basic things that are serving as the foundation for what the creativity that's about to come. But the point is that it's, it's all citizen-driven. I mean, everything is coming from the citizens. This is not council-driven. This is citizen-driven. Thanks for the, ends up.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Ms. Danes?
Um, hi, I just wanted to wish all of the dads out there and father figures a happy Father's Day on Sunday.
Thank you, Ms. Daines, I want to thank the community organization for putting together a success, successful splash day. Uh, it was a very warm and much-needed, so thank you to everybody that made that possible and successful. I will entertain a motion to adjourn, Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Smith, all in favor? Unanimous, it is seven twenty-one, meetings adjourned, safe travels, Ms. Daines.